At this time, I'm calling the regular meeting of the County Commission Thursday, September 11th, 2025 to order. Before we have the invocation, I would like to just remind everyone that today is September the 11th. I think that's 23, 24 years ago. And we need to remember the people that lost their lives on 9/11 when this country was attacked probably for the first time from foreigners. And a lot of people lost their life that day. And we've had another tragedy that happened yesterday that has kind of overshadowed, I think, a good bit of what happened on 9/11. So let's remember the families and those that lost their lives on 9/11. It's a day that we should remember and never forget what happened. I think every one of us who went around the room could tell you where you were and what you were doing on that day. So let's remember that today is Patriot's Day. It's what Congress officially calls September the 11th. And I wanted to mention that. At this time, we have with us tonight Reverend Mike Taylor, the Associate Pastor of Lincoln and First Assembly of God, that will be bringing our invocation. And immediately after the invocation, we'll all remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Commissioner Tankersley. Reverend Taylor, if you'll come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to be here tonight. I was going to mention what you mentioned 24 years ago and then yesterday. It says a lot about where we are as a society, and the only thing I can say is we need help. We all need help as a society and a nation, but thank God we can have help. Amen? I want to read a scripture for you before we pray because scripture is the basis of all prayer. Without scripture, there's no need to pray. It says this, "He said, 'I exhorte therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men,'" that's everybody, "'for kings,' and then it says, "'for all that are in authority,'" that's you folks. "Prayers, supplications, intercessions, giving of thanks be made for all men, kings, those that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. For this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who would have all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth." The word invocation, I looked that word up. You think you know what that means, but literally what it means is to invoke someone greater for help. That's what we would do here now, invoke God Almighty for help in your governance of this county. For what purpose? That we may lead, at least here in our spot, that we might lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty, for that's the will of God for us, that would desire all men to be saved. We have a good God. Amen. We don't always understand, but He is good, and His mercy endures forever. Let's bow our heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you this wonderful evening, Father, with thanksgiving in our hearts, that in spite of all things, we still, in my opinion, live in the greatest country on the planet. And Father, we thank you for that. We are blessed, Father, for the type of government we have, the people that will step up and do the job that is necessary when sometimes it's uncomfortable to do, to govern your people for your purpose, that we may lead a quiet and godly and peaceable life, and we thank you for that. Father, we pray tonight for wisdom. The fear of God, you said, is the beginning of wisdom. We need wisdom to govern, wisdom to do what is right, and boldness once we make that decision, what is right, to do what is right each and every time. And our help, Father, we recognize tonight as your people only comes from you, and it comes from nowhere else. So we beseech you tonight, Father, for your hand to be upon each and every one, every decision made, Father, that your will would be done, and your kingdom would grow, and that this county, this state, this nation would be blessed by the power of God. And it is in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, the Lord and Savior, that we pray and we say, "Thank you, Lord," and we give you thanks in Jesus' name. And everybody said?
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. God bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Reverend Taylor, we appreciate you coming and sharing those words and prayer with us. If we can ever help you, always feel free to call us. We all know you got a tough job with Robert Seymour going to your church. Thank you. Is there a motion that we approve, the minutes of the many previous meetings we had over the last 30 days?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, light sign, and the motion is carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. I have two items that I would like to add to the agenda. One is the CSRA, which is the Central Savannah River Area Regional Commission dues that we have to pay based on population that the state requires us to pay. We have no choice but to pay this, and we do this every year. To give us the authority to sign that contract, we're going to add that. It'll be Agenda Item Number 21. And that will be tabbed in your book of what that is. I think you got it on email this afternoon, this morning. The other addition to the agenda is the purchase, approval of the purchase of an ambulance. Director Broom will talk to you about that when he comes to the podium. That's going to be moved to Agenda Item Number 22. And Agenda Item Number 23 will now be the adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed with those two additions?
So moved, Chairman.
The second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, light sign, and the motion is carried. Item six is the Departmental Reports, the Office of Emergency Services, Director Broom.
Chairman and Commissioners, as always, it's an honor to be here. You have my submitted reports, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, you heard the report. Is there any questions, Director Broom, on his report? I don't see any. Thank you. Six B, if you pull that microphone down, try to speak in it, because I can't hear. I want to put this on the record, so hold on just a bit. We got a state grant, put in a new PA system and some equipment. If you're looking on YouTube, you can see it. But as far as I'm concerned, and as far as Commissioner Clyde's concerned, he can't hear it either. And I don't hear very well, and I don't think it's just me, but we got the SARS PA system. As far as me being able to hear, that we've had in my many years of being here, I'm going to ask Director Walton if he'll get in touch with whoever put this thing in and see if it's a little something they can do. I know I'm hard of hearing, but I ain't this hard of hearing. I don't hear anything. Director Gleis.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. You have my written statement in front of you. Do you have any questions?
I'll just say, I was at the rec department for soccer pictures with the family member the other night, and there were children everywhere.
Yes, ma'am.
How many do we have signed up for soccer?
Like 185.
Wow.
185 on that side and 87 over on Pop Warner's side.
There were a lot of people there.
Okay, I noticed that you're going to be closing Eddie Fletcher Park tomorrow, Friday the 12th. It will be closed.
Would you like to avoid the remain open to the end of the month?
When do we normally close? After Labor Day?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to leave that solely up to you. All right. If you want to close tomorrow, you can close at any time between now. I think we close at the splash pad both by October 1st and the end of September.
Yes, sir.
Just whatever you feel like you want to do, and it suits me. I'm sure it suits the rest of them. On this third item you got with the Ms. Reese's deal out there, if you would, I know what we've done. I've been out there, and I've watched them on the camera. If you would, update them on the batting facilities, that's going to really be nice.
Trinity Image finished installing the turf, and today H&amp;H finalized, hanging the new batting nets and the divider. So we have four stalls now, and we'll be ordering new air springs, so you have four different cages to go in. Very nice. Director Seymour is working on putting lights to it.
Will you open it before we put the lights, or are you going to wait?
We can open it before we put the lights. We will open it before we put the lights to it.
Lights are going to be put on it, and I think, I understand, it's going to be a timer on it, so if somebody leaves it and don't turn it off, it'll go off in a certain length of time. We've gone from one batting cage to four.
To four.
Is that right? And we have a cover over it and new Astro turf on the, we had to add to the pad to make it big enough to accommodate three additional places. But if you haven't seen it, ride out by there, take a look at it. While we're on recreation, as you know, the lady that works on the grounds out there got hurt three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, and she's out for another, what, three or four weeks?
Yes, sir.
Before she's probably going to be able to come back. Director Gleis has gotten somebody to help him out there with that. I was out there this afternoon, the yard, the ground's looking good.
Thank you, sir.
So y'all doing a good job on keeping the grass cut, and hopefully it's going to slow down a little bit. But anyways, any other questions, Director Gleis? I like that little saying at the bottom, "Always keeping the youth busy."
Try my best.
If you keep them busy, you'll keep them out of trouble. So that's the Recreation Department I really like. Thank you. You're welcome to leave if you want to. Six C is finance. Looked like he's going to do it anyway, didn't he? Director Doss.
Chairman, Commissioners.
I can hear you.
All right, Chairman. Chairman and Commissioners, you have my prayer to report. I don't have anything else to add, and if there are no questions, and when you're ready, I'll give you your cash balances.
Any questions, Director Doss? Proceed.
The cash and cash equivalent report from month ending August 2025. The Splosht Seven Fund, $2,368,123. The General Fund, $2,259,517. The Transportation Splosht Fund, $1,718,998. The Solid Waste Fund, $723,660. The solid, the emergency fund, I'm sorry, $315,446. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $302,104. The Water Reserve Fund, $275,978. The Water Fund, $104,172. Those are all of our major funds, Chairman. Our total cash in the bank in all of our accounts for the month ending August of 2025 is $8,403,770. Our Raymond James Accounts, our 12-month CDs, $1,600,646. Our Raymond James Enhanced Savings Account, $548,504. Our total in our Raymond James Investment Accounts is $2,149,149. Our total cash and cash equivalents in the bank at the end of August was $10,552,919.
Any questions to Director Doss on the finances? If not, Director Seymour is up, but before he starts, also in your packet, you have your E911 report. You can look at that, that's provided, and you also have your University of Georgia for the extension report that's in there. The extension director. I know y'all got a different name than that, Robin Stewart himself, but we appreciate that report every month. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have my written reports. I do not have anything to add to those unless you have questions. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to Director Seymour? Item seven on the agenda is comments from the sheriff. Sheriff Smith with us and wants to address the board.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me, and thank you for letting me speak. There's two new projects that I'm working on right now. One is Shop With A Sheriff. And what that is, is very familiar, you know, is the shop with a sheriff, shop with a cop in the other states, but we're changing ours to Shop With A Sheriff. So, you know, with this day and age, with the price of everything going up, I'm having to collect money for these kids. And so I've gotten with the superintendent at the schools, and they're going to be the ones picking the kids, so they know better of which ones are in need. So my goal is 12 children. I know it doesn't sound like much, but that's going to be 12 kids that's going to have a Christmas that normally wouldn't. But with 12 kids, that's $3,000. And so I'm currently collecting donations for that. We're roughly at $1,400. Some monies are steadily coming in, so I think we'll meet that goal. And the other thing is, I've gotten with Walmart and Thompson, so we're going to use that Walmart. They've said that they would do it non-taxable, which is great. And I've got with the sheriff over there to see if they want to do the same thing, same time we are. So it'll be the first day right after school lets out. My second project is what I'm calling welfare checks. So it'll be with volunteers that we call auxiliaries. Now, of course, I'm going to have to do criminal history checks and stuff like that because they're going to be going into homes of our seniors, and we don't want to send convicted felons in there. So I actually went to the senior center the other day and spoke with the group and gave them this idea. I said, "Look, how would you feel if we had auxiliaries come by? They'll be in a car that's marked, you know, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office Auxiliary Unit. They'll have a shirt on with an emblem on the side and their name, where they're easily identifiable." And it was well received. Everybody in there liked it. And I told them, I said, "You know, we'll have a list, you know, give me your name, give me your address, and then we'll, and what vehicles you have in the yard and stuff like that. That way, when we come by and check," and that's the auxiliaries come by and check, just to make sure they're okay. It doesn't matter if they spend five minutes there, 15 minutes there, they're not on the clock. They're working for free. And so a lot of these seniors, and I was really surprised to see how many of them lived alone. And that was a shocking number, to be honest with you. I tried this in Columbia County, but the population over there was way too much to do it. And I had this lady call me from North Carolina back then. She couldn't get ahold of her mother. So she called us and asked us to do a welfare check, went over there, couldn't see anything in the house, knocked on the door, nothing. So I called the lady up and said, "Look, you sure she's at home?" I said, "'Cause I can't hear anything. I put my ear to the window and everything." She says, "She's there." So she said, "Kick the door." And so I did, and she was in there. She was laying in the kitchen floor. I mean, she was fine, but she was laying in the kitchen floor, been there for two days. And so I just think it's something good to have here because the size of our community, we can do this. And so, you know, I'm working on that, and I'm hoping to have it up and running by, you know, the end of October. You know, I've got some volunteers that I'm working with, you know, got a little bit of training because they're going to have to be going out on the radio with it, because I want to know where they're at, that way we can hear when they're out on it. And plus, there's a log of it with dispatch if they're out at, you know, a residence, and it's going to log their time, the date, and everything. And they also have a book where they'll be logging the date and time and everything, too. But they will be utilizing a county car, and I've got some donations that I'm going to use to purchase their polos. And so I've got some people that's going to donate them. Stephanie Corani, I haven't talked to her yet, but I'm going to talk to her and see if she'll donate the stitching for us, for the logo on the shirt. That way, they're easily identifiable. I'm going to go by the senior center, show them the shirts, and the car be marked up and easily seen. Y'all have any questions?
I commend you for that. I think that's a service that the people of the county need, so I think that's it. One thing I want to be sure that we covered on Attorney Gracie is these volunteers that are driving a county vehicle, what do we do as far as liability of insurance with them driving a vehicle or falling down somebody's steps? I mean, they're not under that work with comp, so they volunteers, but I want to be sure we got them covered in the car in case they wreck and hit somebody, they do it, so I don't know how we do that.
Mr. Chairman, I can prepare a release for them to sign, and then with the background check.
If you would, I'm going to get you to pull your microphone up a little bit, because you've got a lot to talk tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I can prepare a release for all of the volunteers to sign, and then when we do a background check, if we need to, we could do a check for their driving history as well.
Okay. If you would, you can do it through the clerk if you want to, but let's get that and let them get signed up.
Yes, sir.
Where they are covered if something happens. We're not, I'd hate for them to be driving a county vehicle in some kind of way they're not covered, they wreck somewhere, and they sue us without any insurance. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
So I want to be sure that we get all of that covered. I know it's durable, we just need to get all of that done, so y'all can talk to the sheriff and do whatever you got to do to protect the county's liability.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Anybody want to comment to the sheriff? Sheriff, we appreciate it. Thank you for all you do. I say this, I think, about every month, and I'm going to say it again now. Most of these agenda items, except the additions, have been discussed in our work session last week, so we don't have to drive through everything we did on a two-hour meeting unless it's hit the high spot. And I think we'll be prepared to go once it made the agenda. We're pretty ready to go anyway. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is an item we did discuss in the work session at length, but I'm coming to you tonight to ask for approval for MTS to do some electronic lock work, actually revamp the whole system at the jail. It has not worked in the jail for a number of years. I can't even tell you how long, but you do have a quote in your book, I think it's $68,300 for a company called MTS. They're out of Alabama, I believe. So Chairman, I bring that to y'all for your consideration, Chairman.
I want to inject this into it because you said it's been there for a long time, maybe a year or two, however long it's been, that it's not operated properly. But it was unbeknown to me, and I think this county commissioner, that didn't happen until I think Sheriff Smith brought that to us, and we need to act on that. That's a big liability to the county. It should have been fixed whenever it was done. But I don't want anybody to think that it wasn't fixed because we didn't know anything about it.
Yes.
It needs to be fixed. Sheriff Smith, are you here? You got anything you want to comment on that? Are you satisfied with what he said?
No, I'm satisfied with what he said. The locks, I mean, when you look at the screen, you don't know what doors are locked and what aren't. And there's some doors that you can't lock with that computer, and so they have to lock the control tower down just to leave.
I think if you're going to talk that much, we need to get you to a microphone because it's probably not picking up. Am I right, Director Walton? Let's pick it up where if somebody's watching, they can hear you.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the lock system, when I first came in there, I mean, there's no way to tell, like, if some of the doors are locked or not. You know, it gives red lights and green lights and stuff like that, and a lot of system doesn't work. Half the system, you can't operate from the front. And so a lot of times, they have to, and it's dangerous to do it, but they have to lock the front up, leave it unmanned, to walk to the back to unlock a door, because the person in the back can't leave their post to unlock doors. And so this right here is going to be really safer, you know, for the community because, you know, number one, we don't want anybody to get out. You know, that's the whole purpose of having this jail, and it's difficult when you look at a screen, because you don't have a clue of what doors are locked and what doors are unlocked. There's no way to tell it. I mean, I came here on Sunday after church one day, and, because none of them worked, and this is probably in February, and messed with some wires. I'm a little bit mechanically inclined, so I can do things like that, and got it to work, and I don't know how it's worked this long, not all of it, just some of the main doors, but I managed to get some of them to work. And a technician that I called with the MTI, or the name of that company, walked me through some of it, and so we were able to get some of the main doors to function. Otherwise, they were not usable. I mean, you couldn't even unlock them with a key. And so this right here will be a tremendous burden really off of us to get this done.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff, before you leave, we, in the work session, we were discussing this with Director Seymour. The Commissioners asked me to meet with you and set up a time where we would all five like to come be with you and let you take us through the jail and look at some of the problems. I know you've got some other problems, too.
We can go tomorrow.
Well, we lining it up. We've already agreed we doing two of all county buildings and facilities that all five of us are going in and meet with some public heads at their places. And I'm trying to line it up, but we decided it got so hot that we were going to wait till it cooled down a little bit. Sometime this fall, we want to, we want to set that up, but you would have no objection for us to coordinate that with you and make a.
I'll give you a personal tour of every inch of that place.
Thank you. I believe you got a motion in a second now. I need a motion to accept a quote from Montgomery Technology Systems LLC to update or replace the existing security camera system and door modules in the jail at a cost not to exceed $70,000. I know that the price is $68,300, but just in case it does, we won't have to come back. And these funds for this project would be coming from the Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax Seven Fund under the T.O. One project. Is there a motion that we do this?
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion?
I guess.
Commissioner Tankersley.
I see where the system is warranted from a year from the date of installation. Have we got any kind of timeframe on what kind of service life this is going to have?
Well, the one down, that's 30 years old. Built 91, and that's the original locking system that went through the jail.
They're pretty reliable for an extended period of time.
And it's the same company that put that rig on you?
Same company.
Same company.
The same company that put this in originally. This is the same company.
That's correct.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, light sign, and the motion is carried. Item number nine is the Verita Emergency FY 2026 subcontractor coordinated transportation agreement. Director Deale met with us last week also. Director Deale, go ahead.
All right, good evening. I am here to ask for approval of an emergency contract with Verita Inc., and Verita is the subcontractor used by the Department of Health and Human Services for our local senior citizen transportation. This is a reimbursement contract that will be retroactive for the dates starting July 1st, and it goes through September 30th of this year. And we sent back a little bit change in the verbiage. We were looking at them to change our insurance cap, what we required, and then there was a line in there about we would provide services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They amended that to take those out, but then there was a little something that Attorney Gracie wanted to add in there, and I'm waiting for them to send that back to us. So I'm. So I'm asking that it be approved contingent upon receiving it back with that corrected verbiage.
Okay, we discussed this the other day, too. And I entertain a motion to accept a 90-day emergency Department of Human Services subcontractor coordinated transportation agreement with Verita. Is that how you pronounce it?
Verita.
Verita Incorporated contingent on a contract that is acceptable to the county attorney. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion is carried. Item 10, Georgia Food Services Agreement for FY 2026. Director Deal.
All right. I'm also asking for approval of the FY 2026 agreement with GA Foods. GA Foods is the vendor used by the CSRA Area Agency on Aging to provide the meals for our senior citizens who come to the senior center, and then also home-delivered meals for several individuals in our county. The prices for the meals have not changed from the previous contract. There was a change. They added Juneteenth as in a holiday on the observed holidays list. And then, again, it's the same verbiage that we're adding to the previous contract. It's a very slight change in the verbiage. And so I'm asking that this be approved contingent upon them returning it with the same verbiage adding.
All right, we discussed this the other day, and I'm glad you mentioned it. Price hadn't gone up. Maybe people will follow that same suit and won't raise their prices. I'll entertain a motion to accept a 12-month contract with GA Foods Services of Pine Alley County LLC with an effective date of October 1, 2025, to provide meals for the senior citizens program contingent upon a contract that is acceptable to the county attorney.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is asked second.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item 11 is the FTA 5311 FY 2027. Ooh, that's down the road. Transit Grant Application, Director Deal.
All right. So the application window is open for the FY 27 5311 Rural Transit Grant. And this is the grant that provides us with 50% of our department's operating budget and 80% of funds that go toward purchasing vans, equipment, et cetera. I'm asking for your approval for me to complete and submit the application. When we spoke the other day, the chairman asked me to get some numbers together. There may be a few tweaks here and there, but what I'm looking at as of right now, the tentative operating budget that I would be looking at would be around $203,000.
Director Deal, does this include any new vans or not?
That does not. So the new, so in '26, we had two vans, you remember, we talked about, were up for renewal. They had reached their end-of-life expectancy, I guess. And so we have been approved for those two vans, as long as y'all approve for that. And then we have one van left. We have three total vans on this grant. The third grant is up to roll off. Those two vans were purchased in 2018. It's a five-year lifespan. So the third van was purchased in 2019, so it would reach its five-year. So that would be, that would go on this. And the county's match for a van is $13,000. I can't remember the exact, $560, something like that.
10% right of the cost of the van. The federal government pays 80%, state 10%, county 10%. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to submit an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for the FY 2027 Federal Transit Administration 5311 Formula Grant for Rural Areas and to authorize the chairman and the county clerk to execute all documents related to the application. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item number 12 is FY 2026 Transit Fares, Director Deal.
All right, last thing for me, I promise. I have submitted a chart of our current transit fees that we charge for rides, and then along with the proposed fare increases. The current fee schedule was established prior to 2018. I'm not exactly sure of the year, but I know that it was before 2018. And I feel like it's time to make an adjustment as of everything else. Things are going up. And these fares are used to offset the department's operating budget, so they do help us with that. The fares that I have proposed are in line with other transit providers around us who cross county lines to provide services as we do.
Okay. Y'all have a copy in your books of what the fares are, and we talked about it last week. Well, entertain a motion to accept the FY 26 Transit Fares as presented and direct the county clerk to update the county's schedule of fees. And I will also ask the IT Director Walton to put these fees on the county website under the Leisure Services Department. I think they're already on there. We'll just update it there, too. When does this go into effect?
This would go October 1st.
October 1st. So this will go into effect October 1. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Director Deal. You may not leave. You need to stay. IT. Thank you. You dominated the meeting tonight.
I promise not to do it next time.
Item 13 is a driveway construction section 64-6, a text change in the county ordinance. Director Seymour?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is also another item we discussed at length at the work session. But this would allow a change in the ordinance to allow for polypropylene pipe or HP pipe. It's a plastic product over and above the metal. We would leave the metal as an approved material as well. But currently today, metal is the only type pipe that we will allow for driveways. And so we're asking for a text change in the ordinance that would allow us to use HP pipe as well as corrugated metal.
And that was a very little change, I think. The only thing it did was added, or whatever that big word is, PPI.
Yes, sir.
Type 1.
Yes, sir.
And that's the only thing that changed in the text change in the ordinance, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
I entertain a motion to accept the text change in the Lincoln County Code of Ordinance as Chapter 64, driveway construction, section 64-6. Journal design standards as presented and direct the county clerk to publish the update. Is there a motion? I have a motion, is asked second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item 14 is the update of, I mean, yeah, the updated alcoholic license. Second reading, Attorney Gracie.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this will be the second reading of the updated alcohol license. This will strike the existing Chapter 10 and replace it. With your permission, I'll begin the second reading.
Go ahead.
Chapter 10, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 1 in general, Section 10, 1, Purpose. This chapter has been enacted in accordance with a planned design for the purposes, among others, of promoting the health and general welfare of the community, to establish reasonable and ascertainable standards for the regulation and control of the licensing and sale of alcoholic beverages, to protect and preserve schools and churches, to give effect to existing land use, and to preserve certain residential areas with reasonable consideration, among others, to the character of the areas and their particular suitability for particular uses, the congestion in the roads and streets, and with a general view of promoting desirable living conditions and sustaining stability of neighborhood and property values, and to protect against the evils of concentration of the retail outlets for distilled spirits in one family, or to prevent undesirable persons from engaging in or having any interest in alcoholic beverages. Section 10, 2, Definitions. Alcohol means ethereal alcohol hydrated oxide of ethereal or spirits or wine from whatever source or by whatever process produced.
Clerk, Attorney Gracie?
Yes, sir.
Without objection from you and the commission, I'd like to spend the reading. This has been on the county's website for the last 30 days since the first reading. And I guess it will continue to be on there for a while. And this is, we're gonna have to entertain a motion to accept the revision to the Lincoln County Code of Ordinance as Chapter 10, alcoholic beverages as read and posted on the website after the suspension, and directing the county clerk to publish the update. Is there a motion that we accept the revisions?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item 15 is the State of Georgia Purchasing Card Program, Director Dawes.
Chairman, Commissioners, as we discussed at the work session, we would like to join the State of Georgia Purchasing Card Program and to replace our existing credit card with Bank of Arkansas. We believe that this would give us a little more control over our card system. And to do this, it would require, there's three actions to do this, Chairman. The first would be the adoption of a resolution that would authorize the county to join the program. And then we have provided the board with two policies. One is a purchasing card policy that would apply to all non-elected officials. And then there is a purchasing card policy that would apply to elected officials. And we would just need action on all three of those items, Chairman.
Okay, you heard the request from Director Dawes. We discussed this pretty much in length. This is gonna have to have three motions, as stated. Motion number one would be a motion to the adoption of Resolution Number 2025.09.1.15, authorizing Lincoln County to participate in the State of Georgia Purchasing Card Program with the Bank of America, and to authorize the chairman and Commissioner Antonakis and the county clerk to execute the resolution and any other required documents. As you know, Commissioner Antonakis is the finance chairman. That's the reason she's on the list with being the clerk. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Tankersley.
We currently have some credit cards in place now that the county uses.
I'm gonna defer all your questions to the finance director. Yes, we do. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Tankersley. We have four cards issued in the name of Lincoln County, and either two or four cards issued in the name of the sheriff's department under the control of sheriff.
Would we need a fourth deal here coming out? That if these are issued in place, that they would also be terminated at that time? Do we need to add another motion to this?
We could add a motion, an additional motion, that as soon as we get the purchasing card in place, that you direct me to close the other accounts. Yes, sir.
Why don't we add that to the motion? Let's add that to motion one. Any objection adding that?
No, sir, that would be fine.
Y'all have that?
Yes.
Okay. So that'll be inclusive with motion number one. Motion by Henderson, second by Tankersley. Any further discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Motion two is a motion to adopt the Lincoln County Purchasing Card Policy as presented and directing the county clerk to publish the policy. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed? And the motion is carried. Motion three is a motion to adopt the Lincoln County Purchasing Card Policy for elected officials as presented and directing the county clerk to publish the policy. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Agenda item 16 is House Bill 2025, 223, 2025 Trees Act, Director Dawes.
Chairman, Commissioners, as we discussed in the work session, the State of Georgia passed a house bill that would allow taxing authorities. So in our particular case, it would be Lincoln County, to waive timber tax fees on damaged, on storm-damaged trees during Hurricane Lean. And then the state has also created a grant program where we would be able to apply for funds from the state to offset any tax that we waive. The waive would be for the last quarter of 2024 and all four quarters of 2025. So it is, there's a limited period for it. It's not a permanent waiver, and it's not a permanent grant. This would require two motions. It would require a motion for the commission to adopt the resolution waiving, temporarily waiving timber tax for damaged trees. And then a second motion authorizing the chairman and the clerk to apply for the offsetting grant from the Georgia Department of Revenue.
Director Dawes, where would, if someone's doing this, where would they go to get the paperwork that they got to do with that? The Forest Commission or the Tax Commission?
So they would, it's available on the Georgia Forestry Commission website. We would add it to our website as well. But the form is a Georgia Department of, is a Georgia forestry form. They would have to fill it out, send it to Georgia Forestry. They validate it. They'll give it back to the individual, then they'll carry it to the tax commissioner, and then they'll bring it to us for the refund.
Okay. I just hope, I just hope if somebody's doing it, I guess they call us or somebody and find out where they can go to do this.
Yes, sir. We will, we will put it on our website. We'll put the form on our website that they would need to get filled out. And the form has complete instructions on it.
Okay, that's good. I think it's good that we put it out there on the website somewhere where somebody could do it. All right, you heard the report from the finance director. We need two motions. Motion one is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025.09.11.16, granting temporary tax relief to eligible standing timber located in a disaster area in Lincoln County as presented. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Motion two is a motion to submit a grant application to the Georgia Department of Revenue for Hurricane Helene disaster area timber grant, and to authorize the chairman and county clerk to execute the grant documents. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item seventeen is repairs to the parking lot east and west side of the courthouse, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, the parking lots here at the courthouse are in need of some repair and maintenance, and so I've gathered a couple of quotes for you, you've got them, I think, in your book. I am recommending that we use southern asphalt to seal coat and re-stripe both parking lots, and do some patchwork over here on the east parking lot, we've got some problems over here that we need to patch, those prices are included in, in your quote, and so I'll bring it to you tonight, Mr. Chairman, for action, it's a total of twenty-four thousand four hundred, I mean, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, Chairman.
Okay, my motion will be to accept a proposal from southern asphalt repair, patch, seal coat, and stripe both courthouse parking lots, east side and west side, at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, with the funds coming from T-Splash Funds. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion?
That's a whole lot better than where we started.
Yeah, a whole lot better, and I think, Director Seymour, you'll kind of coordinate this with the people around the courthouse, that we will do one parking lot?
That is correct, we'll do, we'll do the western side first, since there's no patching in it, and everybody can park on this side when we do this.
Will that be a day delay or two days?
Probably, probably a day over, maybe two days over here, by the time they seal coat it, and then come back and next day stripe it, they've got to give time for that thing to dry, and then we'll allow everybody to park over here and open this one up where we can patch and seal coat it. Now, this side may take three or four days.
A little worse over there.
Yes, sir.
It's because the sheriff spins his wheels taking off, and this is messed up parking lot.
And, and I will coordinate that with every, all the employees, and particularly the sheriff, because it will include the Sally Court and, and all of his parking down there, so I'll coordinate.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Item number eighteen is the repairs to the library on the front columns, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as you are aware, and the board's aware, we've got some issues with the columns on the front of the library, they are, they are wooden columns, and they are starting to rot. I've put together some pricing for you to repair those, and, and so the pricing is, you know, ten thousand dollars for the purchase of the columns, rusty spratling to do the install, remove the old ones and put the new ones in, at a cost of thirty-two hundred dollars, which gives us a total price of three, thirteen thousand two hundred dollars, Mr. Chairman, and those new columns will be a, a fiber column, just like what's on the Dover parks, they won't be wood, they'll be fiberglass, yeah, fiberglass poly, and they won't rot, so that's a total price of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that library was built in nineteen eighty-seven, that's the original columns, and we know that they are all in bad shape, and we've been told we need to do it quicker than later.
Yes, sir. They are structural.
They hold a lot of weight and in bad shape. I'll entertain a motion to approve the replacement of the forefront columns at the library, at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand, with funds coming from the Splash Seven Fund Tier Two project. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion?
What about painting?
Commissioner Antonakis.
I'm sorry, what about painting?
Yes, sir, that, that price from, from rusty spratling is to include all painting and all necessary to, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. It would include all of that, yes.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Item numbers nineteen is one I hate to have on the agenda, but I don't see no other way to do it. Proposed water increase, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we've been looking at, at our water revenues over the last several years, we have not had a rate increase since two thousand and nineteen, and so I am recommending a three percent increase in water rates to take effect October the first of this year. It would just be a one, one-time increase, and then maybe we can take a look at it at a later date as to how we want to proceed in the future, but it is a three percent increase to take effect October the first, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know if I'm looking at this right, because I, I wrote this all down, but on your water rate, that's about a ten dollar ninety-two cent per year increase, is that right?
That's about right, yes, sir.
And then, of course, you add your sewage to it.
Yes, sir, for those hundred and twenty or so customers that we have with sewage, theirs would increase a little bit more, yes, sir.
Okay, it's not, it's not a real steep increase, but it will help us some in what we do, and the cost of everything going up, because the salaries have been going up the last few years, and, and it's, it's just got to have some, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the FY twenty-six water and sewer rate increase as presented, with the rates becoming effective October first?
October the first, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
That's not too quick?
No, sir.
You can make that on your deal?
Yes, sir, we can.
October the first, and that's a one-time three percent raise, unless we look at it again, we were looking at about a five-year deal of a three percent per year, we backed off of that, hopefully things will catch back up, and, and we won't have to do this but one time, and then it would direct the county clerk to update the county's schedule of fees. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Looked like you'd get some help there.
I know what I'm thinking.
Second.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion?
Chairman, I would, after this vote, I have another item that I forgot to add, that's germane to the Water Department, which is a transfer of funds from ARP, but after the vote, Chairman.
Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Antonakis.
I would just like to point out that we've not raised the rates since two thousand eighteen, is that what you said?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Been six years, yes, been six years.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Director Doss is going to ask that we put something else on the agenda? We've approved the agenda, can we do that at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Director Doss.
Chairman, commissioners, if, if the board will approve it, I would ask the board, I failed to, although we did speak with all the commissioners, I failed to put on the agenda the request to transfer a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the ARP fund into the Water Fund to offset the legal fees that the Water Fund has incurred, and if the board would accept that, I would ask that y'all take that action.
You asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars be transferred from ARP to the Water Fund?
A hundred and forty thousand, Chairman.
A hundred and forty thousand, okay, we have, we all know it, you, you spoke with most of the commissioners about this before, updated them on it, right?
Yes, sir, Chairman, you would, you would need two motions here, one motion to add it to the agenda, and the other motion for the actual, my request.
Okay. Is there a motion that we add? Clerk, if you'll get this motion, but we'll add this motion to the agenda, not the motion, but the?
The item.
The item to the agenda, and we'll do that, we just come down and, I guess you can make it Agenda Item Number nineteen eight?
Yes, sir.
That work?
I might add motion, Mr. Chairman, we add it to the agenda.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tankersley that we add this to the, what are we adding, clerk?
Nineteen A. We're, we're adding to the item to the agenda, the item is to...
To allow us to transfer the funds from ARP to General Fund.
Yes, sir.
So be sure everybody's clear, we got a motion, that's second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Item twenty?
No.
Wait a minute, we got to do it, I got you, I got you, I got you, we, we, um...
I ain't gonna vote for it, I just voted.
We got a, we got a motion and a second on proposed water rate increase, or we already voted on that?
Yes, sir, we voted on that one.
Okay, well...
So nineteen A is, it would be a motion to authorize the chairman and the Finance Director to move a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the ARP fund to the Water Fund to reimburse the Water Fund for legal fees, that would be the motion, Chairman.
All right, I, I got you now, took me a minute, but I got it. Is there a motion?
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. I hope you, I hope the clerk's got all this, the second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on motion of nineteen eight? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Now, can I go to item twenty?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Item twenty is the surplus of equipment, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we've got a couple pieces of equipment we need to get surplus. The first one is a Caterpillar D seven Bulldozer, VIN number is seventy-eight thirty-three, the other is a two thousand and ten F three fifty, VIN one F D W F three G R three A E A zero eight seven seven one. I believe you have a resolution to surplus those, we bring that to you, Mr. Chairman, for action on the resolution.
Okay, is, is there any reason, Attorney, that we need to read this resolution?
No, sir.
Okay, good. I entertain a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five point zero nine point one one point seventeen, be a resolution to approve the surplus of county equipment that was submitted to you by Director Seymour, and the clerk can add that to the minutes. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Ms. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion's carried. Item twenty-one is the CSRA Regional Commission dues, as I stated earlier, we have no choice, this is state law, that we have to be a member of the Regional Commission, made up of, I think, thirteen counties. Lincoln County's cost is, the state sets the cost, it's a dollar and fifteen cents per person, they just use the county population, the city has to do the same thing with the city's population, and the amount that we will have to pay, and I ask you to approve, is seven thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and motion is carried. Item number twenty-two is the approval of a new ambulance, Director Brennan.
Chairman and commissioners, I'm here to finalize the purchase of, of a additional ambulance to our fleet, it's not an additional ambulance, it will be replacing our oldest unit in service now, it's something we've been talking about, been working on for many years, I did not have final pricing available for the work session, it came in at like four-thirty yesterday afternoon, the amount of this ambulance that, which will be delivered in January of twenty twenty-six is one hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, we're asking that you approve the purchase of that ambulance.
Do you say that ambulance will be here in January?
January, yes, sir.
Oh, I thought it was February or March.
It will be here in January, they, we had a delivery, yeah, no, we had a delivery date of December, it moved back to January, this has been the history of the last two attempted ambulance purchases, it's being purchased through Emergency Vehicle Sales in Elberton, Georgia, and it is an A E V ambulance.
So, anyone that's sitting here or listening on YouTube, I think it's been, we look back, it was maybe February or something, I forget when it was, it's been several months ago, may have even been before the first of the year. Do you know right off when?
It was February of twenty twenty-three.
February of twenty twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I knew y'all went back, look, what, what happened is, is we were, the entire country was, couldn't get ambulances, it was after COVID, and things slowed down, and we couldn't get an ambulance, and we waited a year or so to get the other ambulance that we just got several months ago. Back at that point in time, when we discussed this at a meeting, we, we agreed that we would go ahead and try to place, go ahead and place an order, so we would be in line because we didn't know how long it would be before we would be able to get one, if it took as long as the other one did, and it's taken pretty good a while. But this ambulance will come in, the good news on this ambulance is that the company, this is a different company than the last one came, but they're both forward three-fifties, F three-fifties, a chassis made for the box of an ambulance is, is a different chassis that you can't just go out to the, to the Ford place, or Chevrolet place, or the Dodge place, and buy their chassis, they are, in production, are made to fit the ambulance, is that correct?
Yes, they have to be triple K, sir.
And that was one of the things that was, that was doing it, it wasn't just an ordinary one, and they got, they got, it might have been the chips, they were looking, I don't know what it was, but we, we placed that order, and now they have worked it out, and we'll be able to get it sometime after the first of the year, and it's about thirty, a little over thirty thousand dollars less than the ambulance we just purchased, because they kept the price that they quoted us in twenty twenty-three, am I correct?
Yes, sir, except for the chassis, they, they could, they, they, the chassis cost increased, and they couldn't honor the, the cost of the chassis from that far back, because they had multi-year increases on the chassis, but for the construction and delivery of the ambulance, they kept their pricing from twenty twenty-three.
So we paid, I think if memory serves correctly, about two hundred and twenty-four thousand?
Yes, sir.
For the ambulance that we just got several months ago, this will be a twenty-six model chassis for a hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to purchase a twenty twenty-six Ford F three fifty, I don't know how to pronounce that thing, what is it?
A E V.
True, true, true m-hawk or something.
Trauma Hawk, okay, Trauma Hawk, A E V Trauma Hawk, yes.
That's a trauma ambulance, a trauma, Trauma Hawk, type one ambulance from Emergency Vehicle Sales, and that's in Jefferson, North Carolina, at a cost not to exceed a hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, with delivery expected in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six, with funds to pay for this will come from the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Seven Fund Tier Two Project. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, sec, I mean, Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion?
Motion, Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley.
What ambulance will this ambulance be replacing?
Twenty fourteen Chevrolet with nearly three hundred thousand miles.
Eleven years old.
Twenty fourteen Chevrolet, yes, sir.
So I guess, now, I remember when we ordered this, went ahead and put an order in, we had the option to take it or not take it, and I guess it's pretty much on time, then, we got one that's got that much way in town.
Yes, sir, it is. And also understand that if, let's just say we didn't have this order in and we needed an ambulance right now and we placed that order, the lead time is over two years for delivery across the industry, irregardless of the manufacturer. Still, it remains a two-year cycle to even, you know, so we will be needing to potentially place an order in twenty-six to receive delivery in twenty-eight if we see the need for an additional ambulance.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Collins would say, if I need the sheriff, if I need the ambulance, I need the fire truck, I want them to have available with the proper equipment on them when they get to my house. He would say that every time we voted on a public safety thing, so. But that said, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the one that most of us look for. But before I do that, I want to say something. I'm allowed five minutes, but I have a privilege to extend that. Is that correct?
Thank you.
I want everyone to know that we had a successful day on Tuesday. Nine one one moved from School Street out to the new location at the Global Drive address. It, Director Walton, Director Acock, Director Doss were all out there. I think we had twelve, thirteen, so vendors out there that day. They were all here. They didn't want me to come out. They thought I'd get away, so I just watched them on the camera. But they were there and I want to say something about Reliant. Mr. Bob, Rob. Brooks, Mr. Rob Brooks is the CEO of Reliant. And after we had the little mess up on the September eleventh, I mean, the August the eleventh opening we thought we would have, and we talked with him. Johnny, Director Walton tells me he couldn't have been any better. He was out there, I think, at six-thirty Tuesday morning himself with several people from Lot. But anyway, I think that these people and the staff, the nine employees at nine one one are all to be commended for what they have done. Angie Morris with the newspaper was out there today. I didn't make that one either. I meant to, but I didn't. I think they were glad, but she was out there today. Hopefully, you'll do a good story and got some good pictures of what we have. I am going, and we mentioned this one time before, to hold my feet to it, but sometime in the next few weeks, I won't be here next week and we're planning maybe the week after that, maybe sometime first of October, once it cools down a little bit. I've asked Director Acock as well as Director Broom. I want us to have an open house out there so the public can see what's going on. We're going to post pictures, I think, on our website and Facebook of what it looks like. It is a phenomenal facility for a community our size. And when Mr. Brooks went in the first day out there, a week ago or so, he said, I think he walked in the door and said, wow. He was shocked to find what kind of facility we've made in our nine one one. I've said many times, the sheriff's office, the police department, the fire department, the rescue and the ambulance service, they're not a bit of good. If nine one one and their dispatches can't get that emergency vehicle to your location, they are the lifeblood of getting whoever you need in public safety to where they need to be. It is a very, very important place, nine one one is. We have secured it. We've stopped any traffic much from going out there, no hanging around. It is a professional-looking place and is run professionally, and I am extremely proud, and I know y'all are, of our nine one one dispatches. They do a great job. Now, they have a great facility, but we will have an open house out there pretty soon. And what we plan to do is walk them through. The nine one one entrance is completely separate from any other part of the building. And they can go through there and walk through the nine one one center. Director Walton will probably not let them look at his room back there with all those wires, but if he won't, I can show it to you on the counter. It looks like to me you get enough wires out there to go from here to Alaska and back. Of course, they're all fixed in, prettied up. You don't see them except back in Johnny's room and he's scared for anybody to go back there. And I don't blame him because it's just amazing what's in that room and what it takes to run this place. So when they go through there, I want them to go out into the EMS part of the building, Director Broom and some of his staff. We'll be there. We'll probably do it on a Sunday afternoon, two o'clock or four o'clock or something. And we can give them a glass of tea or a bottle of water and a peek in or something when they walk through out there. Then we'll turn them over to Director Broom and his people, and he can take them even through the building out there. A lot of people have never been out there. I think I've shown it to the attorney today on camera. And she said, wow, I didn't even know that. That's about four, below fourteen thousand square feet out there. So I'm extremely proud of it. It costs a lot of money to run that thing. You know, the computers are expensive. Last couple of years, we probably spent three hundred thousand dollars, and that's not on the new building. That's just on equipment that it takes to run it. We've gone from two dispatch desk terminals to four. We're not hiring any more people. We're still going to operate two terminals. We have one that has got five computers with all that stuff on it. Where the director needs to come out her office or somebody needs to help. When we have something like we had a year or so, a little over, almost a year ago when Helene hit, or when you have bad wrecks and certain things that happen. The other one, there's nothing on it. It's set up and it's ready, and that's why we hope that we, one day, we can grow into this and it'll serve these many years to come. But that's what we're going to do. I'm proud of that nine one one center. I want the people of Lincoln County to be proud of it. But there's only one way. They can be proud of it, and that's to go look at it to see the pictures that we're going to put out because after that, it's not really a public building for people to go through. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it sounds like y'all want me to talk a little longer. Is that my second? Got a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? I hear none. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, let it be known by saying aye. All those opposed, like, sign. The motion is carried. We stand adjourned.